Cars, trucks, boats, motorcycles, RVs and ATVs, whatever it is you want to buy, West Tennessee Bank has money to lend with very competitive interest rates in terms flexible enough to meet almost any budget. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender Member FDIC.
First thing I would ask if you had a motion to approve the agenda, please.
My motion is approved.
Second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we vote that it is approved. And the first thing is going to be our consent agenda. My motion approved.
Second.
Our motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote as opposed and it is approved. And we're looking to have the delegations to pass.
No sir, I expect this will... May I just go ahead and raise that matter up? It came up at the county commission meeting a few last Monday, not this past Monday, Monday 4th, with members of Beta. They would... I spoke to the two members of Beta at that meeting after expecting to be here tonight, but I have not had any conversation with Kim Moore, who's a Beta sponsor now, or any employers or members.
She lost her aunt and her dad's sick, so that may be...
So are they planning to come? I know it's a June trip. It's when the next Beta trip is. Are they going to plan to come formally and request, we'll just wait?
They'll wait until later so they can see how much they earn and then get dominated.
Well, you see in the packet what we gave last year, just for your recall.
We're making a donation of our mentor. Chair, I'm going to bring a check to him. I forgot it.
So we'll just call that.
Okay. The next thing is our celebrations.
Well, if I can get the first one that was on your script out of the way. We had a, again, coming out of like what Shane said, here we are at the start of the new year. As you can see with Addison Catlett, they've reached that pinnacle of success where we've made it through without craziness raining out of 100 days. But again, I would like to say that looking across the entire school district, you know, again, as we've spoken before about the significance about chronic absenteeism, how we're more attentive to it. I know talking to Dr. Catlett many times about the meetings that he has with students one-on-one, sometimes conversation with parents to get kids more committed to be at school. Looking at the attention that has been given to attendance, I said, "I want to see what our perfect attendance looks like for the first nine or eight, nine days." And as you see the breakdown across the entire district, we have roughly 15% of our students that have had perfect attendance. That's significant in the past several years. We're more attentive to it. I know each school does a lot of good things. I've challenged and asked the principals to do those things on the proactive side. You know, board policy changed a few years ago to adjust the accountability for families to credit their absences to determine if they're going to be excused or left as unexcused. But I do want to make comment, as you see the bulleted areas for each school individually, with the 15% across the entire district, I want to compliment West Chester Elementary. They had 52 students out of there, 262 on their roll. That's 20% of their kids had perfect attendance for the first month or the first half semester or half-year semester. And I know that they have been doing a lot of things, all the schools have in their own way with their own culture, but I do want to say comments to Amy and the hard work that her staff does. It's a group effort. It's not just a one-person effort, but we're very proud of that success and hopefully we continue to grow with that because students cannot learn what they need to know if they're not there. And our teachers and staff really work hard and accountability being wrapped up into what those students can do and can learn and demonstrating in their learning. All of that will be benefited if they're there too. Plus, we've got people that love our kids and they take care of them when they're there. In fact, in some cases, kids need that love because they don't necessarily have that same devotion outside of school. So we're glad to deliver it and fortunately for us, all of our schools are stepping up to the plate and swinging well, but I just want to make extra thanks to West Chester for their efforts.
I've got a question for you.
Yes.
What do you think attributed this 20%? I mean, was there special things that you were doing?
We recognize it every month for the, we have a big esteem like we've divided our whole school into houses this year, which is very new. So all the adults are connected with certain kids. And then you'll hear more about all that next month in our school. I can't wait to tell you about it. But, and then we do celebrations every month that we, outside the doors, if your class has perfect attendance, you can get a sticker on there that those kids, if they end the week, the classes have perfect attendance, get a special treat for that whole class. So they kind of challenge each other, you know, don't leave till 11:30 if you have a doctor's appointment. You know, it really has come to that where parents are making appointments later during the day because they don't want to disappoint their class because they're going to get a reward on Friday. It's just a lot of little things, but honestly, it's mostly about relationships and being sure we're checking in on everybody. So we've, it's working. Hopefully it'll continue to do so.
Educating our parents.
And we've had a lot of conversations with parents, a lot more than we used to about that. And I have a lot of one-on-one conversations with parents once they get on the other end of that too, and those are the hard conversations. So we don't want to get there, but it's getting, it's better.
Good.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you for a great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
If I can, before we go to the next part, I want to make mention the other part of the celebration I left off your board packet, which you already realized, again, this week being Board Appreciation Week, I want to say that high school, if you've not noticed, the marquee sign out front has been posting a message there for, to thank you gentlemen for your efforts. I know from years past, and I haven't called Dr. Grissom or anybody at TSB, but I would say with board tenure, probably there's no other board as a group can match your, especially when Glenn was here. Well, Glenn, 36 years, membership.
He only hit 24.
Okay. Well, his obituary and everything said 36, so.
I saw that.
Well, anyway, that was our mistake, but I do appreciate the work that you've done and what you continue to still do because it's for the right reasons for the kids. And I thank you for your service and hopefully that there's plenty of cake on the way out. You'll take a bigger cut. I know if not, Ricky's going to clean up all of it.
Addison's not going to let him have any cake on her, Addison.
Yeah, he's pretty sure.
But thank you, thank you for your service.
All right, y'all, the next thing, we're going to have to look at the calendar that we approved last meeting. We have the flaws in there that we found out about later, and Troy, I'm going to let you kind of cover that place.
Well, does anybody have any question of what's included there? The issue was, and we didn't realize this until Paul Rainwater, who's the person we have to report this to, said that you can't use a shot pile day for staff development before kids are actually attending school. So that was the issue that separated CF model that you guys approved. Remember, we had gotten six, or really five, because C and F was the same model, but of those six, we had the CF model and the B model being the one that was most favored, so we reduced it down to those two. So between those two, the CF model had, or option had 52.5% favorite, and then the other one, the B model, had 47.5 favorite. So it was pretty equal anyway, just a little shy on the CF. But then we found out from Paul Rainwater that we could not do the CF model because of where that staff development started our school year. So that's why I made the recommendation, since we've already reduced it down to two, we had 47% of our staff, that the B model, and the B model is okay. It does not have the same guidelines that the C did or that CF did. So that's why I made the recommendation that the B option is the one considered now and recommend for that to be the 1920 school calendar.
My motion is second.
Second. We have a motion to second to approve the B model of the calendar. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote as opposed and it is approved. Let's check. I checked all part of the change, so I just couldn't hear that.
Right, right.
Okay, the next thing is going to be recommendations from the superintendent, I believe, about some of our classified staff.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to let you talk through that.
Again, in a conversation recently with Stacy King, she had made mention, because forever we've had it to where classified staff can accrue into 40 days, six days, and then once they reach that level, they can accrue more. So what Stacy brought to mind for me is that we have people who are classified, who are having that 40-day cutoff and are either using the days or losing the days because there is no, I mean, they can't go any higher. There is no additional funding that goes to us if we approve them being able to accrue more. It just gives them more toward their retirement because each 20-day window that they have accrued counts as an additional month toward their retirement. So Stacy's here, she brought that matter up with me, she checked as it shares, she checked with 20 other districts and 19 of the 20 do not have any threshold for classified staff. So we knew that there was not, because I had thought this was state policy that you had to do, but she had found that that's not. And so our recommendation is to allow our classified staff to be able to accrue more than 40 days.
My motion is approved. Second, we have a motion to second to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote as opposed and it is approved.
Thank you.
And we have a couple of policies we need to update.
Yes. We had a, if you look at your packet on the policy 4.600, Shane and I last month had gone through the entire section, but since that time for policy 4.600, there was a change in how the state board of education recognizes their additional points added to those students who complete a honors dual credit course or AP course. Now, in our current policy, which is in your book or in your packet, you see that we add three points for honors courses and national industry certifications. We add four to statewide dual credit and we add five points to advanced placement courses. What has changed with the state board now is that where we have, like for example, our partnership with Jackson State, our partnership with Free Hardeman, our partnership with TCAP Programs, where we're doing these dual enrollment classes, statewide dual enrollment is not the same as what we're doing with those institutions that I named. Now, the state board, including with the statewide dual credit courses, includes all local dual enrollment, dual credit. So they've added another window because more schools, due to the ESO requirements, are offering more course opportunities for these kids, and it's just putting again them in a category where you can add, if you complete the course in a dual enrollment, whatever the grade earned in that dual enrollment, dual credit course, we would add four points to. Now, the recommendation would be, because it's very competitive when you get into those GPAs, especially for valid towards, salute toward in the top 10, this would be if the board approves that change and it's just again, putting a new language in that column for the four points to include local dual enrollment, local dual credit, that that would come in with a 1920 freshman class so that everybody's on an equal playing field since that's when the GPAs get calculated for comparisons. So that's one part of it. Do you want me to go ahead and include the second part? The second part is, and this came from Dustin Insell, who's a senior school counselor, that he is, because of the competitive nature of GPAs, that some students are wishing or wanting to and requesting that when they're enrolled in these dual credit courses or these honors courses, they don't want to take the culminating test. They'd like for the AP courses, they're not wanting to take it because the test is difficult. I mean, it's a challenging test. It's a final exam. So what he's asked was if we could add this caveat that if they don't finish the full course, including the final exam, then they don't get the extra points because of coursework. They're wanting to pick and choose what courses they count toward their GPA or don't count toward their GPA. And there is so much competitive nature, I think, between the top four kids, this graduating group, it's, all of them have 99, but it's 99 points. So it's very competitive. Again, the request is, is that for those, again, as the recommendations made, for those who take these courses, they need to complete the course, including the semester closing final exam to get those extra points.
My motion is approved. Second, we have a motion. Second, any other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Vote as opposed and it is approved.
Okay, 4.605, that's a correction on my end. When Shane and I went through this and I saw those 18 credits, I was thinking that was going back to when we only had to maintain 18 credits. So that's why I thought it needed to be updated to where we are required now with 22. However, when I made this recommendation because of board action at the last month's meeting and talked to the contact person at TSB, she said that that was move on when ready act, which was a new part of the law that allows students who take certain courses that they can graduate with only 18 credits. So she said that is current law. I said, "Well, can we just correct that error just by making it right?" She goes, "It needs to come back before the board." So my request is for us to go back and include where like it reads here, line 23 on page two, where it should read, where ours reads 22 credits. Now I want to go back to read 18.
My motion is approved. Second. We have a motion to second to go back to 18 credits for the policy 4.605. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote as opposed and it is approved.
How many credits do we have in the house?
70.
Was it 60?
60.
85, it was 18.
All right, so we didn't have to have so many?
No, 16.
We had a board with a credit.
No, 16. That was a plus.
That's eight.
In case you didn't like it on one of the others.
Last thing, over here, under the updates, is going to be the resolutions with TSB. And did y'all read over those we have?
We can approve them all. We can talk about any of them individually?
They need to approve all of them.
And then what we'll do is we'll be sending in.
We will update those drafts to reflect Chester County schools, and Bob and I will sign off on those. I had a conversation even today, Representative Kirk Hastings called me and he wants to meet in the next few weeks. There's a legislative conference coming up next month that I'm going to plan to attend and sponsored by TOS. Again, with this new legislative cycle, we've got a new commissioner of education. I know you've probably read a little bit about that. With the new governor, new administration, we expect that there's going to be some challenges back in vouchers, school choice, it's going to be more widespread rather than exclusive where it is now. And I think that Kirk Hastings will be a good friend to schools. He's vice chairman of the Education Committee for the House, which is promising. But I told him that we were going to have these resolutions for consideration at the board meeting, and I will be sharing those with him. I'll be sharing those with our Senator Dolores Gresham soon.
Senator Dolores.
I will. And she's going to hear it from our southwest area. Both of them are.
He's here tonight, meeting at the...
College.
Oh, at Eastchester. He's meeting with the...
I saw something going on at Eastchester.
That's what it does, Kathy Gamble or whatever it is.
I don't know.
I make a motion to approve all of the resolutions that we'll sign those, send them in. Or is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote as opposed and we'll sign those and drop sending them in. Okay, the last thing is some updates, and we'll ask for, I don't know if you heard anything the last couple of days, but what about the baseball? Because I've been asked about that, so any news?
The last news I have is the same news that I shared, the statement, I believe, trying to repeat verbatim what Jeff Bond said, is that he has allowed some other jobs to get in front of this one with plans. He's the one that's drawing up the plans or the spec list so that we can have these bids made public. That's still not yet been done. I expect it'll be done soon, but he can give me a date of when it would be done. But again, as a shared with, you know, we had started off and I went back and revisited what we did last April, the board work session when we were in Pigeon Board. At that time, we had, we had tentatively said we were going to set aside about 60,000. We have since raised that to about 75,000 per, but in my informal conversation with Jeff, the softball facility or softball area of the surface is going to need some dirt work added to it. So there's going to be some added cost to that one. We're hoping that we will have something that we can post where we can get some good bids and we can negotiate the best price for the locations. But we also hope that there is going to be some coming under budget with some of these jobs that we have, such as the, as you see included, the bids announced for the roof at the high school, where we had set aside between 600 to 750,000 dollars, and that's what we thought that price would be. One came close to it, but the one that came in with the best lowest TPO leaseback.
That's the one that gave us the estimate, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It's the closest to the death.
Yeah, that's right. We're coming in under budget on those things, so tentatively, things look promising. I don't know yet, I was going to ask Brett before the meeting about what was the total expenditures for the roof, top units at the high school, all have been replaced, or were...
It's going to come in right at budget, maybe five to 10 hundred. It depends on the crane costs of where, because we didn't have an estimation of that, how long the crane used, but estimations, I can tell right now, we're going to either be right at budget or a little bit under.
I thought that was quite a, I mean, there were over 60 units that we've replaced in short fashion with crane service, had to be for the whole, and think about the weather that we had during the Christmas holiday. So I was very pleased with the work that everybody's done. Thanks for Brett and his leadership and guide us to make sure all those ducks were in the row to make that. But all of those units were done.
What's the life expectancy of the units? Is it 12, 15 years or something like that?
If you take care of them, you should go to 15, 20, 20.
Take care of them.
20. We got 21, 22 years almost out of the ones that were there, but now they cost, I don't know how much they cost us, and that back end and just trying to get them back up to par.
But most of them had been serviced. Some ones talked to me about such vouchers.
Oh, they were, there were probably years that they need to be changed, so.
Was that something that we're looking at?
Yeah, we have a, we actually now have a service that comes and puts in the new, have the ones that are required by the state, and they make sure they're done, sign them, and somebody comes in and checks them after their workers have done the job. They mapped every unit, they change them three times a year.
But also, we would expect that these new units are going to be more efficient, which will be a better price than when we have our monthly licenses.
Can I ask a question?
No.
Is there, is there a set template here that we...
We'll let you decide that and I'll make sure...
You negotiate that with the teachers, not us.
Well, I don't, I, we all know that sometimes you go into a classroom and you've got to wear your coat, and you know, it shouldn't be that cold.
Well, I know that I have mentioned the principals in the past, especially during long breaks, that you set the thermostat low enough to wear for long breaks, weekends. Of course, they're not necessarily being tasked to look at everyone to see. I would, that is a challenge. That is a challenge, yeah.
I will say, changing the roof on our building has helped a lot. I'd like to see what our utility bill has been since that was all changed because we're not having the crane that, like especially when it's warm. It's staying regulated, it's so much better. So I would be willing to think it was probably better. I'd like to see comparisons after a little while.
Another roof bid item is the roof bid at the high school, and y'all can see there that the one person lowest bid does not meet the specs.
What is a silicone over?
It's a spray over. It, you can spray it a roll up, it's seamless, it's just acrylic, some can be acrylic, some can be silicone, but it's, most experts and even the engineer, roof engineer that I've talked to, third-party people, said don't do it.
I must, I never heard of it.
It, it's, it has, which some benefits, it's, well, it's supposed to be a lot cheaper in the TPO, but this one's not. The last one we had silicone, we had on the middle school roof bid, was a hundred, it was almost 100,000 dollars cheaper, but it was, we didn't accept it because every expert said, "Don't do it." So I just...
And I mean, if it didn't meet the specs, I mean, everybody else had a bid on it. And so the second would be Watson's roof.
I make a motion to accept Watson's bid.
Second. We have a motion to second to approve Watson's bid for the low bid that meets the specs. Any other discussion?
I would have won Matlock is so much higher.
He was going to give us the estimate. He wanted to be close to his estimate.
I mean, he does our, a lot of our work.
He won the bid on the middle school.
That's what I thought.
And did, did good work.
Yeah.
And did he do what you did with...
I mean, that's a...
And we asked for, and we asked for a manufacturer's warranty, and we did that at the middle school, we did it at West Chester, but, and this is now, like I said, you get it because now the manufacturers of the burst coat representatives have to come out, they have to approve his work. If they don't approve his work, yes, we do it. Well, they'll issue the 20-year warranty because usually it's 15 standard, but we pay a little more for the 20, but the manufacturer has to approve it before they'll do it. So it's just a little added extra because I'm not a roof guy, but...
He's doing 200,000 dollars.
Aye.
Any other quantity discussion? All in favor of Watson's roof, he's giving the bid, say aye.
Aye.
Vote as opposed and it is approved. About the other senior, first job, updates?
You know, since it cleaned out under the trees over there at the high school and Eagles Edge, why don't we get some of our maintenance guys to do a work on that building and make it look a little better?
Which building is that?
The one that's a shop or garage.
Behind the...
Behind the high school and Eagles Edge. You can see it and it looks terrible.
That's one that's missing.
Oh, I know which one you're talking about, behind Eagles Edge.
You know, since they're not mowing grass.
Sure, sure. I got you. Yeah, we'll put some attention to it.
I mean, look at it. I mean, it...
Yeah, I got the first batch, I know which one you're talking about. I see it on the case.
But the back of it looks worse than the front side.
Now that it's got, now...
You can see it.
Now that you can see it. So what, what kind of, like replacing windows?
Doors and just clean up and like there's gutters hanging off of it. I mean, it's, it's amazing.
Is that something the high school could use? I mean, is there anything in it right now?
Yes, storage. It's got, we've got some things that we've talked about, you know, I think it's got utility there. We've got a little barn that's behind the, the house is torn down, we use it just because it lets us use for, you know, some things, but there's no power to it. So I believe that one has power.
It did have unless it did it all.
But it's a block, it's a nice, it's a nice garage.
We have discussed several different options for that. We have offered our help in many ways and some money to make that usable, and those have, those have not been accepted. So I just, but we're not just leaving it sitting there. It's not just...
Well, I know.
We, we're trying to get clubs or certain organizations that are there, and we've had, we've had a couple of teachers that would not follow through with us. So we haven't forgotten about it. I feel a little responsible there because it's on what's considered the property that we oversee, so.
What do you mean, on the inside of it, is it packed?
It's extremely nice on the inside. It was a horse farm.
I worried about before, I want to see, because that garage thing, if you notice the driveway.
But it's exactly, I don't know.
I don't know if anybody, you can see the, you can see the growth and water hitting on the front there that makes, I want to make sure we're not, put stuff in there and the water just...
We can replace windows.
Yeah, the windows, the windows.
The windows are terrible. Between the high school and that building, I mean, it, you know, we can, since you're not mowing grass, that gives them something to do. Since you're not mowing grass, that gives them something to do.
Yeah. They're cleaning up out there by Eastchester. Boy, that looks great.
It's beautiful.
That looks great.
Well, we've got some more work.
They're going to do some more of the dead trees that are there that are, kind of look like they're.
I was contacted by the county mayor and then I talked to Brent Bishir, some people who had either, they got kids, grandkids are there. They saw some furniture out there where it looks like the kids were sitting out there underneath the dead. They weren't, I don't believe, sitting out there. Of course, it's been wet. It's, I mean, it's just soggy and wet.
The tough getting out there now.
So, but as soon as it gets some drying out, we're going to clean that up even more, remove some of the stumps. Same bunch that did the work before, Kevin White's. I don't know what his official.
He's the last one, George Callen.
But he's going to go back and do some more work, clean that up there.
And our next meeting is going to be on February 21st. And I think Ms. Amy is going to welcome us out to Westchester for that meeting. So we will be at Westchester Cafeteria.
Well, the chair's hard to get up out of.
We'll bring you in a big cushion. We'll bring all teacher rally chairs in there for you.
Fortunately, Westchester is going to be showcasing, hosting us and then Jack's Creek's going to do the March meeting. So that's the two schools there. So we've got most of the schools agreed to host that. They get to showcase their kids or staff or both.